Good afternoon. This time I'd like to call the Nash County Public School Board of Education Special Call Meeting to Order. I would call the roll. Ms. Javis? Mr. Edwards? I'm here. Mr. Bizit's here. Mr. Sharp? Mr. Dunton?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Here.
Mr. Silver?
Yes, sir. Present.
Ms. Washington?
Here.
Ms. E. Bullock?
Here.
Ms. S. Bullock?
Here.
Thank you. This time I will entertain them. Mr. Sharp. Mr. Sharp's here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm here.
All right. This time I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Sharp, second. Second by Mr. Bizit. All in favor? Ms. Javis is not here. Mr. Edwards? I'm a yes. Mr. Bizit?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullock?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Ellis.
Good afternoon. Like to thank you for being here on the special call meeting, but we needed to get some items done based on the governor's decision. I think it was two weeks ago now. So tonight what I would do is like for us to discuss the reopening plan based on the governor's recent order and then have a conversation concerning secondary. So right now, a real update of the session law, Senate Bill 220, which was passed. Just real brief, it requires all elementary schools to open under Plan A. Middle and high schools have the option to open under Plan A or B. Plan C is not an option. Virtual academy, remote instruction must remain an option for families to the end of the year. Students with an IEP or 504 plan must have the option to be in Plan A at discretion of the student, parent, or guardian. Also, it middle and high schools that open under Plan A must notify DHHS and describe the plan to open safely. But this does not have, they have, they do not have the authority to veto the plan. Middle and high schools that open under Plan A will partner with the ABC Science Collaborative to collect data. We are a member of that, so that would not be a problem, but I believe it has to be like a 72-hour turnaround if we have COVID in the classroom. It's even talked about athletic events, but is still written in legislation that they will know and be able to track the COVID cases. So the bill basically says effective 21 days after the bill, which would be April 1, districts ready to open, do not have to wait. The governor maintains authority to close schools on a district-by-district basis. Local districts retain authority to close a school due to an outbreak or quarantine. School districts are permitted to add teacher workdays between the time the bill becomes law and schools open, reopen. So basically, this is what it would look like under Plan A. You would have all students in school at the same time. You would still have in-person learning, virtual academy, excuse me. The remote learning would still be continued if parents would want to continue that or opt out of Plan A. Yeah, also the option would be secondary, middle and high school learning option. You could choose A or B. B is what they're presently under now with a two-track rotation. Where 50% of the students in school at the same time. But this time we did some surveys and some other data points we wanted to share tonight before we move into some our items. So, Dr. Catalano?
Good evening. We actually sent two surveys out. One of them went to middle and high school staff. And then one of them went out to elementary, middle, and high school parents. So this slide here shows the middle and high school staff survey data. So this is the middle school question, and the question was based on information you have now. Do you think Nash County Public School students should move to Plan A with all students having the option of in-person learning at the same time? And you'll see 72.8% of the staff who responded to the survey felt like no, that, that middle school students should not transition to Plan A. And 27.2% felt like they should transition to Plan A. And this is that same survey data. There was a second question regarding high schools specifically. And you'll see that the response or the results were very similar. 74.9% of staff felt like students should not transition to Plan A at the high school level. 25.1% felt like they should. The survey went out to elementary parents to find out whether or not they would need transportation and things like that. We did pull out the, the middle and high school survey question, and this was just to gauge whether or not middle and high school parents felt like they would send their students back under Plan A. So you'll see 52% of the 1,189 responses said that they would send a middle or a high school student back under Plan A. We had 18.7% say that they would rather them remain on Plan B. And then 29.4% elected virtual academy, and that's around the same percent, I believe, that we have currently in virtual academy.
Now, Mr. Faro, can you speak to the latest metrics?
Yes, good evening. As you can see, that both Nash and Edgecombe are currently significant yellow. That is as of March 18, 2021. That should update sometime shortly. Okay, you can go to, thank you. This is just a slide that you have seen before, which dates back to when we started tracking in November up to January 29. And it just shows what our COVID cases were, our quarantine, and then the positivity rates for both Nash and Edge. We can move to the next slide. If we can look at starting March 5 over to March 19, you'll see that the number of cases we're currently sitting with 36 cases that we've had in the month of March. Up to this point, 24 the week of the 5th, 2 the week of the 12th, and 10 the week of the 19th. We started on the 5th with 96 quarantine on 312, 112, and the week of 319, 125. The positivity rate, as you can see for Nash, has gone down about a percentage point from 35 to 319, from 7, excuse me, not a percentage point, about 0.4 of a percentage point. So we've gone down from 7% to 6.6%. And you can see for Edgecombe, basically stayed about the same going up to 6.8 and now back down at 6.6 during the week of 319.
So this next slide is basically the continuation of the reopening staffing metrics that we've been sending at least since February or January based on staffing impacts. You can tell right now that staffing percentage is 97.5 current. Still using the green, yellow, and red. This will come and this will help us to, when we do have to send data to the ABC Collaborative, we've already got this data. So we will continue to track it just like we had been beginning of the year. The next slide is the toolkit. And just wanted to briefly share one page on that toolkit to kind of explain, I believe it's page 7. So, page 7 that we were, no, 6. There you go. So I just wanted you to see page 7, when it talks about Plan A and Plan B. And you can tell under Plan A, the significant difference is the six feet of social distancing. So basically, under Plan A, you don't have to adhere to that requirement. So that was the big change when you go from Plan A and B. All right. This Grant, let you speak to the vaccinations.
Sir, good evening. Can you hear me?
Nope. Barely.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Scott was doing a Verizon commercial for a minute there. So with our vaccine clinic, we, we do have 61% of our staff who have received their first dose. And I do want to say, in getting just the first shot, the reduction of your, if you're exposed to getting infected with COVID is you're reducing your chance of getting COVID by 80% just after the first shot. With the second shot, then you move your percentage up to 95%. So we have been working hard on getting our second dose clinic. Actually, we've been working ever since we did our first dose clinic to get dates. And we were really wanting a date on a Thursday or Friday because of the reaction that a lot of people have shown after the second dose. So the, it's unfortunate that spring break falls within that time. We were able to schedule two options for second dose clinics. So the one that our nurses and that we're going to take care of scheduling for everybody, we could not get, after working with the Health Department, and a time until April 16, which is a Friday. However, there's a, you can call the, anyone can call the call center with the Health Department, and they will schedule if you're in the February 26 clinic for March 30. The March 5 clinic is April 5, and then either one is April 6. And that's due to the timing of the minimum of 28 days from the first dose to the second dose. We are aware that the call wait time is long. Nurse Terrell and I have been talking with the Health Department again today. They are supposed to be adding up, adding on some slots so that we could get some later afternoon slots, as well as give us some additional resources that we can refer staff to. I, I wish we had all the doses and that we had the control over scheduling and having it be really easy for everybody, but unfortunately, I feel like this is the best that we have been able to come up with for the second doses.
Under Plan A, with social distancing means that all students opting for in-person learning are in class together. The two-track rotation is eliminated, therefore there's no social distancing of six feet apart at all times within the classroom setting when students are moving or transitioning. Within the hallways, there would be an expectation or in common areas that students and adults are six feet apart. That just relates to eliminating that six feet when you're in the classroom setting. Transportation, new routes, no social distancing requirements. Middle and high school would have to share some buses. Right now, we have been operating at one student per seat unless they live in the same household. Under Plan A, we would put possibly two students in a seat. And actually, according to strong tools, you could put more, because sometimes on elementary buses, in a regular situation, we would have sometimes three students in a seat. School nutrition, more students being fed in person is still continuing with our drive-through feeding daily. And facilities, classrooms will have to rearrange, bring furniture back in two classrooms so that we can accommodate more students that's coming back under Plan A.
The Plan A scheduling is intended to minimize as least disruptions as possible. So we want students to continue with the same schedules. So parents and students will not have to change their existing routines and schedules. Also, this will allow teachers' time in the day to meet the needs of virtual students, as some of our teachers will still teach virtual and in-person students. And it's important that we continue with the deep cleanings on Fridays. So our schedule will remain for elementary, 7:45 until 8:15, which would be student arrival and breakfast. 1:45 dismissal. Middle and high schools would be from 9 to 9:30, student arrival and, and breakfast. And we will dismiss at 3 PM. Okay, so just to give you a snapshot of the data that we have so far for our secondary schools, broken down by middle school and high school. Our teachers have been making calls and doing surveys for our parents just to see the percentage that would want to return Plan A, Plan B, or remain virtual. So for our high schools, they, the high schools have the highest percentage of our parents who wish to remain virtual with about 56%, and then 30% returning on Plan A. And a good many of those 30% returning on Plan A are in our self-contained classrooms and are spend the most time in an EC classroom with a, with an EC teacher. For our middle schools, we do have 56% that are wanting Plan A. And then virtual is about 30%. So our middle schools do, in terms of your EC students, students with an IEP, wish to have the highest percentage in Plan A. So it's about flips based on the high school and the middle school percentages. These are just the percentages of the parents that we've actually been able to get up with. We do have some parents who we've left messages with, and we're still trying to, to get access to, but this is about 60% of our, of our population.
So at this time, to me, I think we need to vote on action items on two points. One would be, we're mandated by the state to start by April 1. We don't want to start on Thursday. So what we would like to do is get you to vote and allow us to start March 29, which would be Monday. And I think we would have to vote on that because we're not going to be starting on April 1. We want to start earlier. So we would like you, first, to vote on that. And secondly, I'd like to have a discussion about, so what do you want to do with secondary? Goals. To me, you're starting to mix Plans A and B in a school, which is mighty difficult, which means your EC 504 kids will be in Plan A. Then you're going to have your regulated kids in a Plan B. And when it comes to logistics and things of that nature, we're going to need to make a decision as to how we move forward. Okay? So can we vote on that first plan about can we start on the 29th?
Make a motion that we start the K-5, the mandated ones, on March 29, with superintendent's recommendation.
Second, motion made by Mr. Bizit, seconded by Mr. Jenkins. All in favor of the motion?
Question.
Ms. Bullock?
I can't recall right now. I read it, but I can't recall. But does the statute say that K-5 have to be in school five days a week? Or is it four days and we can do a day of virtual?
So they have allowed us to go four days. That's why in our, we want to keep the same schedule to not interrupt the families or the students. We're just going to keep the same schedule, same cleaning Fridays, but just go into Plan A.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion. We have a second. I'm going to call the roll.
I have one, and just one, I hate to interrupt, but I was not able to log in. I had a problem technically getting in. So in a nutshell, are we talking about now moving our K-12s, increasing the class sizes?
This is just K-5. We have a motion and a second for Ms. Javis.
Okay, well, that's why I'm asking. Is this going to include or increase the class sizes for that K-5?
Correct, because the governor's plan, basically, we're all in Plan A, K-5. There are no more social distancing restrictions in the classroom.
Okay.
Three feet, masks, we're still keeping those, but that social distancing will, will only be recommended.
But, but the students that want to stay virtual can stay virtual.
Correct.
Okay.
But just for clarification on my motion, I'm following the screen here. The mandate is for pre-K through 5, all EC and 504 students.
And what we're voting on is whether they start on March 29 or April 1, and the motion on March 29.
Correct, right.
Because we don't have a choice. They have to go.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just using the date we go by.
Right.
Okay, all in favor? I'm going to roll call Ms. Javis.
Yes.
Edwards is not here. I'm a yes.
Edwards is here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Edwards?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Bizit?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp? Mr. Sharp? Mr. Dunton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver? Mr. Silver? Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullock?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock?
Yes.
That's a yes for Mr. Silver, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
All right. Only one, Mr. Sharp. Is he online? Mr. Sharp, how do you vote?
Mr. Chair, do you copy that?
What did you say, Mr. Sharp? I did not.
Yes, yes.
Okay, the, the motion passed. You now must vote.
So the second option that I'd like for you to discuss tonight is whether we proceed with an Option 1, where 68 would be in Plan A, 912 would continue Plan B. You still would have the virtual academy option. Your EC 504 students are still every day. Or do you want an Option 2, starting April 12, where 6 through 12 is Plan A, which means you will have everyone K-12, K-13 technically, would be in Plan A. And that is what I'd like to bring tonight for you to vote on.
What would you recommend, Dr. Ellis?
So I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Well, let him finish his recommendation, then I'm going to call the roll and give each board member a chance to discuss how they feel.
And the reason I said that, I might be dropping you in a minute. I just want to say that.
Okay.
I'm on the roll, so I may be dropping you in a minute.
So my recommendation would be Option 2, because we are starting to mix Plan A and Plan B students together. And when it comes to transportation, we're sharing buses. If we did go into a Option 1 and we did Plan B and we, on a later date, go for high school, that means routes are changed all over again. It's, it's going to get messy. I think that we've done enough with vaccinations. I believe, I don't believe, I know our principals can handle this. And I think that this would be the time, if we're going to go into a Plan A secondary, I think April 12 would be the time.
And Mr. Sharp?
Ms., Ms. Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to, because I don't want to drop, I'm going to make a motion now, and we have discussions, having the second motion. I want to make a motion, because if you look at the data, what was presented, you're going to have a lot of kids that probably will remain virtual. So you will probably have the same consistency what you got. So with that said, I'm going to make a motion that we bring all our kids back from 6 to 12 after the, after the break.
Second.
Option 2. We have a motion by Mr. Sharp. Do we have a second? Mr. Jenkins, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to go with Option 2.
All right, I just wanted to clarify, because all the kids come back under Plan B, but if his motion was Option 2, then, okay, that's clear. That's clear. Thank you.
And now I'm going to go call the roll, so everybody can have their chance to discuss. Ms. Javis, you got anything to add?
Yeah, I have a question for Dr. Ellis. If we run into any problems, because we don't know how things shake out, and so many times we look for the positive, and sometimes it turns around on us. But if our numbers start to tank for us, do we have a rebound idea for this?
So under this new plan, you will still have the option of closing schools, classrooms, all that, all those metrics we provide on Fridays, you're going to be receiving the same information. We had to quarantine a class last week. The same protocols will be in place. None of that changes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Mr. Edwards?
I had one more comment, but.
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Javis, go ahead.
Well, it is just really an observation. I have had a lot of calls from teachers more in your middle school and high school concerning about the social distancing piece. That was a concern, but I do see that you can opt in closing if need be, so that will be something I will bring to their attention.
Okay, Mr. Edwards?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bizit?
I'm good.
Mr. Sharp? Anything else to add? Mr. Dunton?
Just one point, just for, just for clarification. There's still a social distance. I'm hearing about, there's no social distance. There is a social distance. It just went from 6 to 3. So let's not say there's no social distance.
Okay, Mr. Dunton?
No, thank you, Franklin.
Mr. Jenkins?
No, thank you.
Mr. Silver? Mr. Silver? Ms. Washington?
I do need a point of clarity on the social distancing. Are we honoring the three feet or not?
We're going to honor the three feet as best we can in a regular setting classroom.
Thank you.
Ms. E. Bullock?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Okay.
I'm, I feel better about this whole thing now that our employees have received at least one dose of the vaccine. And I do hope that it can be worked out where they can get that second dose prior to the 6. Or at least before the day before the 12th, before the 11th. I think it is to our advantage if they, if somehow another, we work it out. So that they can go somewhere to get that second dose. Before returning to school.
Ms. S. Bullock?
I'm still, I'm looking at the survey, I still will go back to, our teachers are speaking out, and they're saying that. Plan B is working, it's working best, and they would like to maintain that. So I just want to point that out, it is there, the information is there, so I support staying in Plan B. Especially with the nature of mixing classes and students and actually being in those buildings and moving around the way that they do. I was able to go to schools and see how they flow, and I think it's working the way that it is. And they have an option of whether they come to school or not, and I think we should remain as we are.
Okay. We have a motion? Yes.
Chair, I'm here now, I was on mute, I apologize. I support the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, we're going to vote on that now, I was giving everybody a chance to, you know, speak, if they had any questions or anything. I. I. Myself like Plan A, because I would not want to have to reroute buses twice. Because the middle school and high school do share buses, and that's something to be taken into consideration. At this time, we have a motion and a second on the floor to follow the superintendent's recommendation to open up Option 2. Which would be Plan A, K, or pre-K through 12. All in favor, Ms. Javis, roll call?
Yes, we're reluctant, but yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Mr. Bizit?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dunton?
I vote in support of the motion.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes, I vote to support the recommendation.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullock?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock?
No.
Okay, motion carried by a vote of 10 to 1. Any other questions at this point?
Hey, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you to the superintendent and his staff for doing an outstanding job of working with Mr. Hill. I know it has not always been easy, but they have been diligent in their resources and trying to work out a system. And getting our teeth that first vaccination and working in conjunction to allow them to get the second one early for those that fall within that category. So thank you, Mr. I assume Dr. Ellis here is there.
Okay, any other comments? Again, I would like to thank the staff and everybody that's working hard, we got a lot of work to do to get everybody back in place April 12th, but I look forward to that date. Any other comments at this time? I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Bizit's got a question.
I think there was something in our last meeting, do we not need to do anything about graduation or discuss that?
We're going to do some April.
And that's plenty of time, I just want to make sure we hadn't overlooked it. I'm good, that was all I had.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I made the motion we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Javis, second by Mr. Silver. All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like.